To go into executive session.
Can we have a prayer?
Oh, we're gonna, I thought we were gonna do that in between the break unless we do it all now. Okay, calm down, calm down. Let's go ahead and get the preacher up. Yeah, yeah, we haven't had one in a while, so, well, we had Commissioner Tamayo filled in for everybody, so, as we do all meetings, let's start with an invocation by John Phillips, Minister at the Central Christian Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our Heavenly Father, we thank you for the privilege to serve others, and we pray for our Commissioners and for our Judge, as they have come before us as servants, and we pray, Father, for our county, that you would use each of these servants to make the improvements that we're able to make in our county to help others. We ask you to give them wisdom and knowledge and discernment in serving, and we thank you for the others that are here to help them. May our county be known as a county that's always open for the change that's needed to help the people. May you bless this meeting, and may your presence be welcomed, in your son's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Let me have, uh, Tencha, Mancha, followed, or Javier, you're here, and is Dr. Garcia here?
She was come, uh, she was told 5:30.
Okay, we can have both of y'all lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance to the US flag and then to the Texas flag, and you can do it from there if you'd like, okay? No, no, Pledge of Allegiance first.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and into the regardless of which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to witness this flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one nation, under God, one and individual.
Thank you. Well, then, if we're already, if, if, if y'all are here, are we gonna, do you wanna wait for Dr. Garcia then to do it?
Yes.
Okay, alright, let me, do I hear a motion to go into executive session? Move by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tamayo, to discuss the following items. Item A, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel regarding proposed change orders 3942, 63, 101, and 102 relating to construction work under the Dancy Building renovation contract with Joe R. Jones Construction pursuant to Code Section 551.0711A and 2. Item B, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning threatened litigation by federal government for right-of-entry to survey and do site evaluations on Cameron County-owned property along the river for the Border Security Infrastructure Project, commonly referred to as the Border Fence, authority to represent Cameron County in said litigation pursuant to Code Section 551.0711A. Item C, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning issues relating to possible acquisition of lots 1 and 2, Block 1, Castex Export Inc. subdivision pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item D, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 13 for right-of-way for the Dixieland Road project pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item E, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 5 for right-of-way for the West Rail project pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item F, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 6 for right-of-way for the West Rail project pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item G, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 17 for right-of-way for the West Rail project pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item H, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Maria Stella and Socorro G. Perez versus Aleem Ahmed, Constable Frank Lobles Jr. in the 197th District Court, cause number 2008-01-106-C, for authority to represent Cameron County Constable Frank Lobles, Constable Precinct 3 pursuant to Code Section 551.071A and 2. Item I, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Rosa and Ramos individually as the administrative estate of Jose I. Ramos and others versus Omar Lucio, Cameron County, Robert Oyervides, Juan Cortez III, Fnac Garcia, Lieutenant Raúl Rodríguez, Cameron County Deputy's Office of Constable Precinct Number 6, Cameron County, Texas, Constable Mesed Burneas, Precinct Number 6, Cameron County, and Sergeant Refugio Pérez, Deputy Constable Precinct 6, in the United States District Court, case number 7-08-CV00111, for authority to represent Cameron County and individuals pursuant to Code Section 551.01A and 2. We're in executive session.
Everybody's here for-
Oh, they're all here?
Yeah, for now, I believe. Do we have everyone here?
Everybody's here.
Okay, do I hear a motion to not go into executive session?
So moved.
By Commissioner Tamayo?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, um, all in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. And what we will do, we'll take a, one thing out of order, which would be the swearing-in of the newly-appointed Civil Service Commissioners, Mr. Javier De León, Chairperson, Dr. Chris Garcia, hi, Chris, Commissioner, and Ms. Ortencia Mancha, Commissioner, okay? So, um, I'm gonna read the oath of office to y'all, and then just repeat after me, and where it says your name, just state your name, okay? Raise your right hand. I-
Aye.
State your name, do solemnly swear or affirm-
Solemnly swear.
-that I will faithfully execute-
That I will faithfully execute.
...the duties of the office of-
The duties of the office of-
Cameron County Civil Service Commission-
Cameron County Civil Service-
...of the State of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability-
To the best of my ability.
...preserve, protect, and defend-
Protect and defend.
...the Constitution and laws of the United States-
Constitution and laws of the United States.
...and of this state-
And of this state.
And I furthermore solemnly swear or affirm-
That I solemnly swear and affirm.
...that I have not directly nor indirectly paid-
I have not directly nor indirectly paid.
...offered or promised to pay-
Offered or promised to pay.
-contributed nor promised to contribute any money-
Nor promised to contribute any money.
...or valuable thing-
Or valuable thing.
...or promised any public office or employment-
Or any public office or employment.
...as a reward for the giving or withholding a vote-
As a reward for the giving or withholding a vote.
...at the election at which I was elected.
At the election at which I was elected.
So help me God. Thank you very much. You all now form. If you all, if each of y'all wanna say a few words, you can, and if you don't, that's okay too. Javier?
Judge, Commissioners, first of all, I'd like to just thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve another term on the Civil Service Commission, and I look forward to working with the new Commissioners, Dr. Garcia and Ms. Mancha. I've had the opportunity, the pleasure of working with Dr. Garcia in the past when she was Assistant Superintendent, and her dedication, hard work, is gonna really help with the Civil Service. I haven't had the honor of working with Ms. Mancha, but I look forward to it in the future. And if I make, Judge and Commissioners, I just would like to add that, uh, I'd like to say, on the previous two Commissioners, I'd like to give a public thank you for their hard work, their dedication. If it wasn't for a lot of their hours and, and, and time that they spent, it wouldn't make our job a lot easier that's gonna be going in the future, so I would like to thank Cecilia and Jorge for the countless heart they have. Again, Judge, Commissioners, thank you for the, the vote of confidence, and I will, I promise you that I will dedicate my time and effort to do the best I can possibly do for the Cameron County and for you, Judge, and the Commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Javier. Dr. Garcia?
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, I wanna thank you for the opportunity to serve. I hope to give you, or give the Court, the best possible job that I can give. I appreciate and am honored to have been, um, appointed. Uh, I hopefully will get to meet each and every one of you as time progresses. Thank you very much, and I apologize for our lateness. I have been here since 4:30. We just, we're a little delayed for another cause, and I thank you very much, and have a nice evening. Thank you.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you very much for this appointment. I promise to serve as diligently as possible. I will do the best I can for our county, and I promise you that I will be here at every meeting. I was told that, that it's gonna run into late nights sometimes, and, and that it was gonna be hard work, but I'm ready for it. I'm ready for the challenge. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And just a little bit of housekeeping, uh, we'll have you all sign these oaths, and then if you can, just give them over to, uh, do give them to you, or, or, Mr. David, I have Okay, now, do I hear a motion to go into executive session? Move by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tamayo, uh, all in favor, sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. We will go into executive session, we'll be back in a little bit. Good evening. Do I hear a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Um, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item A, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel regarding proposed change orders 3942, 63, 101, and 102 relating to the construction work under the Dancy Building. Do I hear a motion to deny all change orders?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item B, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning threatened litigation by federal government for right-of-entry to survey and do the site evaluations on Cameron County. Do I hear a motion?
Bruce is legal. Can you read the motion for us?
You wanna read the motion for us?
Yes.
Bruce, just so we make sure we got the wording right.
The, the motion would be to, uh, grant the United States Government a right-of-entry to Cameron County parcels along the river, eleven parcels in all, on terms similar to the order given by Dr. Tina in a similar case in North Carolina, federal court here in South Dakota. And upon similar terms, and those terms so far have been a hundred dollars' worth of temporary, uh, right-of-entry compensation, that the federal government will not unreasonably damage the property. Uh, the, it will be a discussion and negotiation by which the United States would tell us what steps they intend to take to try to minimize the impact on the environment, uh, culture, commerce, quality of life for those lands and the people in Cameron County.
And also-
To include the videotape.
Well, and to include also the concept of-
The levy.
The levy system, and the videotaping, given authority or engineering departments to videotape the properties to document the conditions they're in now before anything occurs. So moved.
Move by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Please note Commissioner Wood's name. Item C, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning issues relating to possible acquisition of lots 1 and 2, Block 1. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Wood, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Tamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item D, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 13 for right-of-way for the Dixieland Road project. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
Unauthorized negotiations, so moved.
Move by Commissioner Garcia, do I hear a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item E, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 5 for the right-of-way of the West Rail project. You wanna take E and F together, since the motion may be similar? And item, and item F, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 6. Do I hear a motion?
Move to go to condemnation.
Okay, move by Commissioner Benavides, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item G, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 17. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report of counsel and authorize negotiations?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Garcia. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item H, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Maria Stella and Socorro G. Perez versus Aleem Ahmed, Constable Frank Lobles Jr. and others in District 197, District Court. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report of counsel?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item I, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Rosa and Ramos individually as the administrative estate of Jose I. Ramos and others versus a whole bunch of folks. Do I hear a motion to authorize representation of all county personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Tamayo, second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion?
Uh, just, I'd like to add, to the greatest extent possible, without there being no conflict.
That's part of your motion, Commissioner Tamayo, and, and that's part of your second, Commissioner Wood.
Yes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item three, public comments, I've got, uh, a couple. One by Mr. Sergio Sarate. And I'll be followed by Brenda.
Brenda.
Oh, hey, Brenda. Okay, go ahead, Sergio.
Honorable Judge, Commissioners, good evening. My name is Sergio Sarate, and I'm here on behalf of a nonprofit organization called Down by the Border. Uh, it's an organization my wife and I started about three years ago, addresses the needs of children with Down Syndrome and other disabilities. Um, a couple of, I, I'm gonna make a comment and a respectful request on the park project presentation that you're gonna be hearing here in a little while. Um, October 28th, we had a big festival at, at one of our parks here. We, uh, it was for children with disabilities, and we had more than 5,000 people show up, and, not gonna go into detail on all the great things that we had there, but one comment that a mother told me, uh, haunted me. Um, she came, uh, with a child in a wheelchair, and she said, "Do you meet any place other than a park?" When we have our festivals and all that, and I mentioned that we go to the movies, we go to the, the beach, and we go to other places, but I wanted to know why she did not wanna come to the park. And she said that her, her child was not welcome at their park, and I was taken aback by that, and I asked her to clarify that. She literally took me by the hand, we went to go see the playground, and most parks are not welcome for children in wheelchairs. Um, she says she has taken her child to different parks, and every time he gets to the, to the playground area, you know, the kids are jumping, hiding, you know, sliding and swinging and everything, and there's nothing for her child to, to enjoy there. Um, although I, I am a parent of a child with a disability, my little girl can walk around, and we can adapt the, the playgrounds, but, um, when she told me that, it just kinda bothered me that I, I hadn't even seen that, and, so I'm requesting that, when you consider these parks, that the playground area, that you add at least 20% for children with disabilities. The reason I'm saying 20%, that is about the number of children with disabilities in every one of our cities. Uh, I think it's the right thing to do. Um, most of all your playground equipment companies make adaptabilities for children with disabilities. Just because it says ADA, if a child in a wheelchair cannot enjoy it, maybe it's not really ADA. Maybe they're talking about structure or, uh, how it's built. If you go to any park, the, uh, parking lot is ADA, the walkways are ADA, the bathrooms are ADA, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the playgrounds are adaptable to that child. Um, we focus on that child, and we've been, you know, kind of, uh, focusing on that child in a wheelchair, 'cause if he can enjoy it, any child can enjoy it. Um, one example is, is a saucer-shaped, uh, thing that a child can wheel themselves underneath, put their hands in, and, and there's sand. He can make sandcastles. Well, any child can just walk up, enjoy it as well, and that's what I'm talking about. Um, Brownsville has taken the lead in this. We made the presentation to them, the new sports park is gonna have, up to 40% of it is gonna be, the playground area is gonna be for children with disabilities. Uh, it's a respectful request that I ask, um, on behalf of these children and, uh, of Sergio, I think that's, uh, first of all, it's very commendable, and, and why we've been remiss in not even addressing those types of concerns, 'cause no one ever, really, honestly, no one's ever really brought it up, but I think at this point, what, uh, we can't take any action, obviously, but I think what, what, what I'd like to personally request of, of our park system is to contact you, if you wanna give them a contact number, as we start developing the future parks, and even see what we can do in incorporating this type of concept in our existing parks, uh, that have you be one, one of the initial, if not the initial, contact person to help us develop that. I think that's an excellent program, uh, and I wanna, I wanna commend you and your, and your Envoys for, for really bringing this up-
Thank you.
-to this. Uh, just, it's a great idea.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. I always, I think of that child, and it just, uh, grabs you, but I, I have a lot of literature on this already. Um, there's certainly a lot of other nonprofit organizations, one of them called Boundless Playground, that if you build a park that way, at least 20% of it, um, they, they will certify it as a boundless playground, and that's, you know, on their website, parents, that when they come on vacation, they look for parks like this. So, um, that is my request, and I, and I did talk to a few of the gentlemen here, and they were more than willing to, to help out, I just wanted to, you know, on your request to, to go forward on that.
Well, appreciate that. We will probably need some kind of an action item at the next meeting, Javier, if you'd like to put just an action, just to, maybe, acknowledge and ratify and do whatever we need to do, so we can start incorporating that. We just have the beautiful little park in Port Isabel that we did, uh, last year, we've got some other plans, and, and I think there's something that this Court needs, and I know this Court will, will really take some, really interest in this, okay? Thank you so much. So just get that name out, and we'll do that for Monday's meeting. Go ahead and put it on, and, and we'll just take it from there, okay? Thank you, Sergio. Brenda?
Good evening, Judge, Commissioners. Um, I'm here tonight to briefly, um, speak on the family protection fees, also known as the divorce fees. Four years ago, I appeared before this body to request that you approve a $15 divorce fee that would ultimately be distributed to shelters and other agencies that offer legal assistance to family violence victims. Uh, the Commissioner, Commissioners Court at that time approved that request, and I thank you once again for that action. Then, over two years ago, the legislature approved an increase in this fee from 15 to 30 dollars. I would like to now request that the Commissioners Court place this item on a future agenda for review and approval, to increase it from 15 to 30. Uh, we've just not brought it before you, uh, at this time, so, you know, we're, we're, as, uh, one of the two shelters, domestic violence and sexual assault shelters in Cameron County, uh, I'm appearing before you. Also, um, CASA has supported this as well. Uh, I, so, uh, I would also like to request that the Commissioners Court take action to distribute the 2007, um, family protection fees, divorce fees, as soon as possible. It usually is distributed, the, in January, it's now February, I was waiting for the request for proposals, it hasn't been distributed, and I'm just asking that it be distributed. Um, I just, as Executive Director of the Family Crisis Center, uh, I wanna tell you how much we appreciate your support, and, as you all know, this is the only money from the county that the shelters receive, and combined victims last year between Family Crisis Center and Friendship of Women was 2,000 victims. That's unduplicated victims, not counted twice. And so, we both are serving quite a few, uh, and I would just respectfully ask that, uh, that you consider these items. Thank you for, for your consideration, and I really appreciate your support.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Let me ask, that, uh, Mr. David Garcia, just put that on the agenda for the next meeting, and also try to follow up on where we are in terms of the distribution of those funds, okay?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, public comments, contin- con- Yeah, I was about to say, any public comment, people that not have an opportunity to speak, please come forward at this point.
Judge, I would like to make one short public comment.
Hold on, uh, go ahead.
Uh, last week, we had a call, I know that John and myself were asked, he was asked to be at Cameron Park, I was asked to be at Laguna Heights Park, and AEP Re- no, I'm sorry, CPNL Retail, uh, had an announcement to make, which was in relation to the lighting projects that we have in those two communities. We've been hammering out a way in which we can turn the lights on. We have the money to put the lights up to the Orca Grant. If that money is not utilized, it would be lost in the grant. Uh, as a result, CPNL Retail has agreed to provide the service for the next two years, and we have a commitment from our legislators to introduce legislation that will help us make sure that we can properly figure out a way to access or assess the individuals that are recipients of those services. So I would like you now to present to you this that was given to us, and, to me, this is a $20,000 check from CPNL Retail Energy-
Oh, that is good for CPNL.
...to the communities up, and we look forward to that project moving on.
Thank you.
I know John had his, his ability to do that too at Cameron Park, and-
All right. Where's our audit, sir? Just deposit this tomorrow.
Yeah.
John probably deposited already.
And, uh, we, we thank the Representative Oliveta, Representative Escobar, that kinda spearheaded this project for us, and, uh, as soon as, uh, we can get some right-of-way issues taken care of, you know, the structures will go up, and hopefully we'll have a lighting ceremony in the next few months.
Good project. Thank you, both, both Commissioners for, for, uh, for that project.
Uh, and I do wanna excuse myself, we have a Texas Transportation hearing that's occurring in Harlingen tonight, and I do wish to make some comments there on behalf of this commission.
Go for it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Fuentes, how are you?
Good afternoon, Judge, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Francisco C. Fuentes, and congratulations, uh, as we can see, the county is doing some, uh, good, positive things, and things are coming back to the county. Um, I'm also wanna let you know, I wanna let you know that, uh, I got my new passport through Aurora de las Garzas office, it was a great service, and I would like to ask you at this time, uh, to, uh, help that department as much as possible with, uh, necessary funding and personnel, so they can do a better job, and they're doing great, but you're gonna have more people coming up, uh, trying to get passports, and, uh, it's gonna continue for a few years. Even with that new ID, people are still coming up to get a new passport. And, um, on another note, uh, I want you to, uh, to understand that, uh, the previous speaker, what she's asking to increase the fee, let's make sure that, uh, the young ladies that wanna get a divorce and are all by themselves, they will not be able to afford a higher fee. I had some secretaries who worked for me, they wanted a better life, they were abused, they wanted to get divorced, but there was so much money involved, they could never get to first base. So let's put some wording, and then if you're gonna do something, put some wording that a lady that is being abused or is in the center, she don't have the money, she can still continue with the divorce process. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment from anyone who, uh, has not had the opportunity to sign up? Alright. Item four, a presentation of a resolution recognizing Baldo Melo, Mr. B. Trevino for being selected as 2007 Texas Independent Automobile Dealers Quality Dealer of the Year. We have a resolution. Tony, you wanna do it, since you brought it?
Does it have placed this item on the agenda, uh, for the simple reason to recognize Mr. Mr. Trevino for his hard work? I've dealt with, uh, hundreds and hundreds of car dealers throughout the years that I've been here, and, and, uh, this individual, uh, I'll tell you what, this individual deserves to be, uh, uh, Car Dealer of the Year, and I'm glad he did, uh, was awarded, uh, uh, in December, November, at the, uh, conference, or, the Car Dealer of the Year. Just to let you know, Judge, that Mr. Trevino has been nominated to be, uh, Car Dealer of the, uh, the Year International, the International Car Dealers, so, but, uh, that's gonna be coming up next couple of months, but, uh, but, uh, Mr. Trevino, congratulations.
Not only, uh, Tony doesn't dish out these things very often, so, it's a bit, I mean, we do it all the time for anybody, you know, but, but Tony doesn't do it for, you know, for a whole lot of folks, but to me, that's, that's a, that's a high tribute to you. Um, I'm not, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, okay? It's kinda long, but, but I will tell you that it was unanimously passed by all members of the Court. But let me just go ahead and just read a little bit of it. Whereas the Commissioners Court of Cameron County congratulates Mr. Baldo Melo Trevino for being selected as the 2007 Texas Independent Automobile Dealers Association's Quality Dealer of the Year, and whereas Mr. B. has been a member of the Texas Independent Automobile Dealers Association for 26, is it cuando, chiquito, or what? For 26 years, and is currently serving as Second Vice President of- For 26 years, and is currently serving as Second Vice President of South Texas Region Six, and is certified master dealer since the year 2000, and whereas Mr. B. has a commitment to excellence at his dealership by serving South Texas customers since 1977, and whereas the Commissioner's Court of Cameron County, together with all independent car dealers, acknowledged the good work Mr. B. has done for his customers, committed employees. Be it resolved, the Cameron County Commissioner's Court, together with the Texas Assessor Collector, recognizes and appreciates Mr. Baldo Melo Trevino's hard work in being able to obtain the 2007 Texas Independent Automobile Dealers Association's Quality Dealer of the Year Award, approved this 29th day of January 2008, signed by all members of the court. And again, congratulations. If you'd like to say a few words, you can, but congratulations to you.
Yes, thank you, Judge, thank you, Commissioners, thank you, Tony, this has been a great honor for me, and thank you all, and God bless you.
Item six, Presentation on Status of All Capital Improvements on Park Projects. Mr. Mendez.
Judge, Commissioners, Pete, a few weeks ago, asked me to prepare a presentation for the court, bringing you all up to speed as far as where we're at on the projects that we got. Not all of them are capital improvement projects, as far as coming from the COs, but a lot of them are capital improvement projects for the park system. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jim right now, he's going to go ahead and talk about it. But one thing I want to talk about, Mr. Sartre, that I do commend him, and we can appreciate that, we've, the problem that we have with some of our park playgrounds is that we built them in-house, so we can't buy equipment that's, that you can modify and attach them to the structure. So, we did purchase about a year, year and a half ago, some equipment for Brownie Road or for Pete Benavides Park for that reason, because we had some complaints, and we got some money from the Lions Club of Brownsville for that, and we installed some equipment, and we attached it to the structure. And Jim's going to talk about as far as what we're buying now, the structures that we're buying now, the playground equipment, is ADA accessible, and not only accessible, but it has several components for the children or adults in wheelchairs.
I've got a handout here for you guys, too.
Well, thank you, Javier, and thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for giving us the opportunity to get up here and say a couple of things about the parks. I've got a PowerPoint. I know that PowerPoints are cliched and tired, and so I'll try to make it as painless as possible. Just in sort of a prelude, I am the Special Projects Coordinator for the park system. It's been, I've been sort of behind the scenes, you all are familiar with me on a one-to-one basis, but this is the first time I've been up here and talked to the court en masse. And so, I apologize if I do any stuttering up here. It's a huge administrative challenge for me to be able to take the money that Cameron County has entrusted us with and to administer it in a way that I, that all of us want to see it utilized as efficiently and as, you know, the biggest bang for your buck. And it's something I take very, very seriously, to judiciously plan, execute, and be the custodian of these projects. Cameron County Parks, I feel, we excel as a team, along with the rest of Cameron County, the contractors, the vendors, and so on. And so, with that in mind, this progress report covers through January 30th, the end of last month. There's some points in here, when I get up to them, they've already been superseded. So, as I was writing this project, things were actually being done, and this project is a little dated now, it's as through January 30th, but we're a little bit ahead of that. Geographically, all these parks are scattered throughout the county. Took me an entire day to collect recent pictures of the parks, so you can imagine the administrative challenge of actually shepherding these projects along. Summarily, it covers special projects only, and things that I have the involvement in, but I have touched on other projects as well. Only currently active projects are within the scope of this report that I'm about to present to you, you, the court, and the public this evening. So, with that in mind, let me get through this as painlessly as possible on this PowerPoint. Okay, the first slide is basically an overview, and it just shows that we have 17 existing facilities, new or existing facilities, that we're addressing. These facilities, and it's kind of hard to see from the screen, but they cover the precinct, the location, and the status of the project. We have four improvement projects that we're doing right now, seven renovation projects, and six new construction projects, for a total of 17 projects. Well, if we have 17 projects and 17 facilities, that would stand to reason that there's one per facility, but you'll notice over in the status column that I have put quo on a couple of the parks, because basically, they're in a state right now where we're operating that park, and we're not doing anything one way or the other in terms of these type of improvements, renovations, or new construction. The second page of the overview is basically the distribute, the distribution of the funds. And if you look down at the bottom of the little XLS that I put, or the spreadsheet that I put in there, the total expenditures that we're looking at right now is $7,933, 700, or 7,933,795.79. That's a lot of money to me. Out of the certificates of obligation, which are county-bound, is a little over $6,000, almost $7,000, and then other totals, about $2 million in other funding. The pie chart on the right-hand side of the screen there is the distribution among the precincts of the different projects that we have. Now, one thing that I did want to make mention of is that within Precinct Two, I have, you listed it, $334,016, but that's actually about $200,000 light. I put the funding in there in terms of what I was given, and in terms of real funds, but there's about $200,000 in other funding that we're adding to that program as well. So, Cameron Park is about $534,000. Now, in the meat of the matter, Isla Blanca Park, these will be Precinct One, our first presentation, probably one of the biggest projects, to me personally anyways, is the new boat ramp. I came from the area of education, I came from the University of Texas, Pan Am, the Coastal Studies Lab, so I've been involved, I've been over my head in this project, literally, a couple of times, and I'm talking about in the water. I started this project from day one, when it was nothing but an environmental assessment. We're less than a month away from the grand opening on it, we're just getting a parking lot built for it. The county's budget is $230,000 on it, the rest of it's going to be TPWD-funded. Great facility for being able to utilize that part of the bay, and as we all know, the island doesn't have a whole lot of boat launch facilities. So, this ramp is going to be a heavily-used ramp, it's really neat to see it getting finished. Isla Blanca Park, we got a lot of other projects going on in there. We've got a lot of renovation we've done in the last year, we renovated the structures over in Dolphin Cove, we've renovated a couple of pavilions, we've, and I'm not going to get into the, you know, the blood and guts of the thing, but what I do want to do is, there's a, thanks Marcelino and crew, I don't know, I saw Marcelino here earlier, I don't know what I would have done without those guys, and they just did a wonderful job. And for that matter, Louis Ota, who is taking control of a lot of the building projects, man, without the cooperation of the rest of the county, these things wouldn't get done. Certificates of Obligation are funding most of this work. Maurice LaBlanca, we had, you know, there's just a lot of upgrades that we've addressed because of people's concerns in the last several years. We're, a lot of the infrastructure's being addressed, we built a new heliport there with the cooperation of the town of South Padre Island, that's substantially complete, only cost the county about $13,000 in funding, so, you know, we did, we did real well with that. We have a lot more to go on that park, folks, and it's one of the things that I like to spearhead and keep on. Andy Bowie in Atwood, we're sort of status quo with Andy Bowie right now, it's an income generator, we are looking at, of course, keeping it maintained and keeping everything up to date on it. We're looking at extending the services to Atwood, and one of the major issues that we got going in that area, and I put a very poignant photo right there, that is an example of some erosion that's occurring there, that particular sign was placed back in almost the Dune Field about a year ago, and now it's on the wet beach, and so we've got to kind of address what's going on with this beach erosion and the causes of it. Highway 48, and any of us who've driven by Highway 48 at any time know that that boat ramp gets used, and it gets used a lot, and so we're renovating that boat ramp, we've taken that boat ramp under our wing as a county, and we're looking at about $550,000 to do the job on it, funded by the certificates of obligation. We're going to put some prefabricated restrooms in there, redo the parking lot and ramps, it's a heck of a used facility. We're hoping to have it done by the first of March next, or, I'm sorry, by late July of this year. We're actually hoping that the design work is done by the first of March, and that's Dos Logistics doing that. Yeah, thanks, Joe. TPWD is, he just made a correction on it, he said TPWD is going to be doing the funding on that, so, we'll make a correction there. Benavides County Park and Brown Road Social Services Center, we're looking at the irrigation system and landscape upgrades, and some staff and operational considerations in those parks. That park also has a fairly new playground structure in it that does have not only ADA, has all of our parks do ADA accessibility, but it has ADA-specific equipment in it as well. A lot of our parks, we're looking at at least 10% right now of ADA-specific equipment, and we're looking at, looking forward to working with the gentleman that presented earlier into, you know, making those parks really friendly for all the kids. Heck, that's where it's at. It's the focus of all of us. Cameron Park right now is currently under construction by Thompson Construction, they're actually doing two other parks at the same time, about 25% complete, we're hoping to be done in June. It's got, as I mentioned before, about a $550,000 budget under the certificates of obligation. We're looking to do cost savings by landscaping, doing some creative field lighting work, basketball court, soccer field, those type of things, we're doing, some of it in-house, and so, you know, we're looking to try to save the county as much money as possible on these projects. Bejerrano McFarland, or the Laguna Heights Community Park, it's substantially complete, but I do want to, you know, Joe Vega's been a real big proponent in hustling up money and donations and grants for that park. It's a wonderful park, and it's one that we completely built in-house. We have a couple of other parks that we're doing that with, we're proud of that type of work. It might take a little longer, but I'll tell you what, folks, the cost savings to the county is real good. Laureles Park, and the Commissioner isn't here, but we've been working hand-in-hand with him, the planning phase about 75% complete, we're hoping that the new construction bid is awarded in May, and that we're out of there by January of next year, about $1.5 million on that. It's going to be a great park for Laureles Community, and we're also taking cost savings measures on that. I'm working to do some zero-scaping and specifying the plans, landscaping materials, as I am on almost all the county parks. Let a little of my biologic training come back. Adolph Tome Park, another very, very utilized park, if you've ever been there on a weekend and seen all those boats going in and out of Adolph Tome, you know that park gets used. The management of the park is really good, Johnny Todd takes care of just about every issue, they're building new picnic tables, they're doing road repairs, they're fixing the fishing piers. That park looks pretty good, if you all haven't been out there for a while, about $18,000 we spent, or we're spending in there in those, in those repairs. We're planning to do some continued shoreline stabilization, and I put a big, you know, asterisk next to that one, because if you look at the photo on the, or on your handout, you can see the before and after of where we've stabilized that shoreline. In areas of that park, we're losing as much as a foot a year, and that's a lot of loss, and some of it can even threaten the infrastructure. So, CF, we're hoping will, and it sounds pretty good that we're going to get funding to be able to continue that shoreline restoration there. Boy, here's one that just, you know, it hurts me when I see it. Santa Rosa, Santa Maria, and El Ranchito, the community parks. Ever since I've been here, and I've been here about three years now, it's been something that we have, every year, we, the entire community of county and communities, we address these issues, and it's just been a real problematic one, but I think we're on the right track this year. We have an RFQ from a consultant to address and direct the restoration and repairs to these pools. They're very complex, it's not a matter of just going in there and throwing some bandages and that kind of thing on the pools. And so, we've got a budget of about $280,000 on it, something that I'm adamant about, guys, I'm adamant about getting those pools upgraded and back to serviceable condition, so...
We had a meeting last week in Santa Maria, and that was one of the topics.
Right, excellent.
So, I'm glad it's being capitalized, so they can see it.
Yeah, I'm not going to go back, but the RFQ is due next week on it, and so, hopefully we'll be able to, and we've talked with some consultants, it looks like we're going to be able to move forward on that. La Paloma Park, a brand-new park also, under construction, Thompson Construction is doing, pardon me, is doing that, they're about 43% complete, the estimated date of completion is June 2008, costs about $1.5 million, 1,429,000, funded by the certificates of obligations. The Commissioner is so proactive in bringing these parks to the communities, the learning centers, and, you know, it's just, boy, I'll tell you, I really like to see that, and I thank you, Commissioner, for your activity in that. Los Indios, this is one, I know we've been, this is one that's been on my, you know, we have been knocked down time and again, last summer was so wet, we're about 65% complete with Los Indios right now. The picture that I have right there, the baseball field, is already superseded, and I took that picture about a week ago, but the baseball field is essentially complete, and we're looking at completing the park probably by March of this year, without any more rain in the picture, and at a budget of $160,000 to build a park. We are on budget, at 160 grand to build a park. I'm pretty proud of that one, I think it's going to be, it's going to serve the community. The Commissioner told me earlier, now we have baseball, intramural leagues that are wanting to form between these new parks, and we don't even have grass on yet.
They're already having meetings, and they're organizing themselves.
So, we're excited. Cameron County is moving forward with this stuff, also funded with the COs. The Santa Rosa Boys and Girls Club, we're essentially complete, is at 90% completion. The estimated date of completion is going to be mid-February, budget is $707,348, non-CO money. These are a couple of pictures of it, because, you know, a lot of us don't get around to see these things all the time, but all we need is a couple of little minor issues, and we're complete with that. So, that's going to be a great facility as well. Yeah, that, thanks, Javier, that one's within budget also, so we try to stay as close to that budget as possible. I'll tell you what, it causes us a sleepless night or two here and there, I know I wake up seeing numbers sometimes. Rio Hondo Community Park, another one, boy, are those people crazy about baseball, and they're at 52% completion right now, the estimated date is also in June, where that intramural stuff, $1,652,000 funded by the COs, Murray Thompson again, and again, let me go back and hit the play structures in there, they will have specific handicapped-type equipment in that play structure. We didn't know the figures or the distribution, but, you know, we'll work with that, and we'll find out what, you know, what's necessary in there. I guess that's it.
Jim, I would like to thank you for coming forward and making this presentation.
Thank you.
I know that I'm very proud of the improvements that have been made at Isla Blanca, and the staff, Javier, Jim, and all the Parks Department have really, really made that place look very, very different, and for that, I thank you. I know that you all are pulled in every way, you know, across the county, but you find time to come to our, to our meetings when we have them, and again, thank you.
Thank you.
I think, Judge, I want to commend them also for the fact that, I know at least in Precinct Four, and I'm sure you've done it across the county, the interaction with the communities has been at an extremely high level, and a level where I've had people tell me...
tell me that they never had so much interaction with county employees and elected officials, and I think that's something positive, Judge, and I think it's something that we need to strive for and bring to a higher level. Uh, the one thing I wanna mention, and I, and I, you mentioned the fact they're already organizing, and they are organizing their leagues and so on, what's beautiful about this is sometimes we forget the population increase in these rural areas, and, and it's really phenomenal. Every time you turn around, there's another subdivision. Uh, these parents on two-eighty-one, meaning Los Indios, La Paloma, and so on, have been taking their kids to participate in, in, uh, in Little League and so on, either to Mercedes, uh, or to Harlingen or San Benito. So, right there, you know that there's a big percentage of kids that didn't get there because they didn't have transportation. So, I think in the long run, I know this is something that's hard to, to analyze and say, "Well, uh, you know, does it really help in other areas?" And I see the sheriff sitting back there, and I think he knows that this will, you know, positive, I've always said that positive action reduces negative action, and that has to do with kids. You give them something positive to do, and they're not gonna be doing negative stuff. So, I think that, that there will be an impact, uh, on, on le- uh, less, uh, burgarizing and so on. We've already organized a group of kids, Jim, in La, La Paloma, to help us because we know that the sheriff can't have someone over there all the time, the constable can't have someone there all the time protecting our parks. Well, we saw a bunch of kids playing soccer in an empty field right next to where we're building the park, Jim, and, uh, probably they weren't supposed to be there, for one thing. But we went over there, we got their names, we got their phone numbers, we got them excited all about the park, and we told them point-blank, "This is gonna be your park. We're not gonna be here protecting it. You are." And I think that if we just get in, our youth involved in that they need to protect their parks, that's what we need to do. Well, I'll give my lecture for the day.
I'd like to add that, uh, I've also enjoyed working with y'all on Cameron Park at, uh, the project there and other areas around the county, and as Commissioner Tomayo is saying, the best money spent is the money that's spent on prevention, the money that's spent on the youth as they're growing up to keep them away from the problem, so the sheriff doesn't have to see them when they do grow up. And, uh, I know sometimes people ask us about, you know, "You're spending so much money on parks," but it's a good investment. It's an investment in our future, and it's an investment, uh, for everyone's future in the county, and it's, uh, things that we need to be doing. I learned a long time ago that parks are an integral part of a good community, to make a community whole and to make everyone, you know, sometimes, in, in lots of cases, as, as Commissioner Tomayo and Commissioner Benavides are pointing out, it ends up being a focal point in our neighborhood, and this focal point can be a good focal point, like parks are, or it can be a bad one, where we don't have parks. So, it, it's just really something that we need to be doing. Uh, I'm glad we're doing it now, that we sold the COs to, to get it done, and I'm sure there's gonna be more to come as the county continues to grow in the future.
Any further comment? Any comment from any member of the audience? I echo all those sentiments, and thank you for the, your hard work, and I know you've put a lot into it. Thank you very much. Do I hear motion to acknowledge, uh, the report?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tomayo, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Consent travel items, are there any items within those two sections that any member of the court wished to take out and discuss separately? Do I hear motion for approval?
So moved.
Move by-
Judge, excuse me, can I, can I request, uh, number fifteen?
You wanna take that out and fix it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Which one, I'm sorry?
Number fifteen? Okay.
Table?
To table?
No, just take it out, okay.
Oh, take it out.
Now, do I hear motion to approve all consent items as presented and travel items?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Wood. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item fifteen. Consideration and authorization to execute contract number two thousand and eight C- CO two thousand and thirty-seven for a memorandum of understanding between Beacon of Hope and Cameron County for the use of Centro Cultural Community Center to provide services located twenty-one-hundred Gregory Avenue, Brownsville, Texas. Mr. Mendez.
Judge, Commissioner, the reason I asked this to be, uh, pulled out was, um, they'll be had asked that we, uh, request insurance from this group, um, and when speaking to them, they said that they, um, they're a, uh, non-for-profit, and they're currently trying to obtain insurance, um, for their business now. Um, they've been in business for a year, and I don't know why they wouldn't have it, but, um, I would request if we could make it subject to us receiving, um-
Adequate insurance coverage, that's fine. Do I hear motion?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tomayo, second by Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item twenty-five, no, I'm sorry, twenty-seven. Budget amendments, line item transfers, and our salary schedules. Have you had anything out of the ordinary? Do I hear motion? Any questions from any member of the court? Do I hear motion for approval of item number twenty-seven?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Tomayo. Do I have a second, by Commissioner Benavides? Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item twenty-eight, approval of county claims. Do I hear motion to approve the claims as presented in addition to the ones that were passed out?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Wood. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Please note my extension on the five that I'm gonna give to you.
And I have an extension, user one-nine-four-eight-five-four to Red River.
Item twenty-nine, consideration and adoption of the Cameron County Stormwater Prevention Plan. David?
Judge, Commissioners, a couple of years ago, um, Cameron County started the Stormwater Prevention Plan Program, or the initiation of, um, trying to get into the program based on, um, federal requirements, um, that were passed under the Clean Water Act. Um, initially, we were asked to submit our initial letter, initiation letter, to TCEQ, which is the state agency that administers this program, and basically, what the, um, what the, um, this program was, was gonna do was to bring in line municipalities and local governments with regards to stormwater runoff and stormwater pollutants, um, in different areas of, uh, construction, um, within their jurisdictions. So, before you, you have the, um, Stormwater, um, Management Plan that was prepared by TEC infrastructure, who is our, uh, our, our firm that is working on this project. Um, we've gotta submit this by, um, middle of February, and basically, it's got a couple of, a few items that, that, um, are required, um, under the Stormwater Management Program. Um, there's required public education and outreach, there's public involvement and participation, um, detection and elimination of illicit discharges, controls for stormwater runoff from construction sites, um, post-construction stormwater management in areas of new development and redevelopment, and pollution prevention and good housekeeping measures for municipal operations. Um, these are identified as the best management practices that, um, we'll be using. TEC did, um, coordinate this with our engineering department, um, Mr.ino Horsar, engineer, is the point of contact for most of the, um, most of the program that is gonna be administered, him and, and his staff. Um, Todd Compton with TEC Infrastructure is here. There's any detailed questions or questions regarding the specific, uh, management plan.
Were you able to complete this by the timeframe? I know that we visited, this thing was frozen for a while, and no one seems to know why, but it was frozen, and, and, uh, TEC was kind enough to, to bring it to our attention that, uh-
It's my understanding that it's complete, um, the document has been completed, and it's ready to go to TCEQ for-
Okay, Todd, any, any comment?
That's, that's correct. What's due on the eleventh of February? The notice of intent, the cover page, the, the cover sheet that's, uh, required by the TCEQ for the plan, and the plan itself is complete and ready to be, uh, sent to TCEQ.
Okay. All right.
Now, just add, this is, this is a submittal to TCEQ. TCEQ can come back and ask for changes, additions, corrections, you know, it's just to get us to, to, um, submit this project to them so that, you know, we're in compliance.
Do we have a timeline when you'll get the response from them?
They say thirty to sixty days.
Sounds like-
Okay. Do I hear motion to, uh-
Moved to adopt.
To adopt the Cameron County Stormwater Prevention Plan? Moved by Commissioner Benavides. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Tomayo. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item thirty, consideration and possible action regarding the two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight equipment list. Javier?
Judge and Commissioners, um, the list is being brought back, uh, for final approval. Uh, this is a condensed list, basically just including the items that were, uh, I guess tentatively approved, uh, the last, uh, time this was brought before the court. Um, the, the, on the, on the first page is the, uh, general fund, and listed there are, uh, the equipment for the computer center, uh, the vest for the constable precinct five, the equipment that the court had agreed upon for the sheriff's office, uh, the jail system, and the, um, camera system for the juvenile probation. Uh, what's at the bottom of that list are the, uh, other items that were, um, discussed about in reference to the constable's office and equipment that the, uh, the tax office is, uh, feels that is necessary for the operations of their department. And, uh, as before, what is listed here is the breakdown of the financial requirements for, for this equipment, broken down what was agreed, agreed upon last time, and this, what it would take for this additional, uh, uh, equipment. Uh, in reference to the vehicles for the constables, on, on the last page, I did include a listing of the vehicles that were, uh, being requested to be replaced, uh, and those refer back to the, the items that are on the first-
Javier, does this, does this keep us within, um, within the amount that we've discussed in terms of our annual amortization payment?
Um, uh, I believe at the last meeting, we were gonna try to keep it around two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand. This is just a little bit over that. This, the requirements for this right here is two-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars.
So, we're like thirty thousand over?
Correct.
Javier?
Javier, under annual payment, you have a, a five percent number here?
Yes, that's estimated.
Five percent interest?
Uh, I'm sorry?
Five percent interest?
Yes. Now, on the others, the second page is, uh, the equipment for the park system, uh, and then the third page is the, uh, two pickup trucks for the, uh, baleen inspectors.
If we go back to the park system for a minute, this mid-sized four-by-four, does that replace the, the truck that's considered a lemon or something? Is that the one?
Yes.
Okay. So, okay, so how much is it going to increase in the general fund?
In, uh, the requirement we had, uh, we actually had about, uh, twenty thousand dollars available to keep our payments the same, so it's gonna increase two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars if you approve this list.
Okay, hold on.
What?
No, no, no. What is it that we're, that we're basically giving up in the general fund? Because I think the discussion was that we wanted to keep the amount of general fund obligation about the same, so as, so as debt was being retired, we were, we were basically replacing it.
Right, but, um, basically, anything we were adding, either in Roden Bridge and in the general fund, was gonna require additional funding.
Okay, so in the general fund-
Uh, there was only about twenty thousand dollars available that was gonna come off.
Okay, so in the general fund, how, we're adding how much? The two-hundred thousand?
Two-hundred, it would be two-hundred, approximately two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars.
What are we, what are we, what are we retiring?
In, in the annual requirement, there was only gonna be a decrease of about twenty thousand dollars. It's just, it's because of the, the amount of equipment that had been, uh, approved in the past, excuse me, uh, the requirement was not going to decrease from this year to next year. It was gonna stay pretty much the same. After that, there was gonna be decreases in, in, uh, the lease schedule as far as, uh, for previous year's, uh, borrowings. But for the, from this year to next year, it was gonna stay pretty much the same. There was only gonna be about a twenty thousand dollar decrease, uh, in the general fund.
Okay, let's go, just, another question, John, or Ed?
Go ahead.
Let me ask a question. Let's, let's, let's bypass general fund right now. Let's go on to, to the, to the easy one, which is the park system. We'll just take one at a time. Have you had, if we do this to your park system, can you absorb it within your, within your future budget to do this? Or are you retiring something and adding? 'Cause I know on the, on the vehicle, you got rid of one, but are you just replacing it? I mean, what's gonna be the, the impact to your budget?
Yeah, I think we can, um, we could absorb it, and, uh, hopefully, hopefully, uh, in the near future, hopefully in the near future, we'll be, um, um, soliciting proposals for, uh, development of other land in the parks, so we'll be able to, um, uh, use that income, uh, that's generated through the rent, uh, to pay for some of the other improvements and so on.
Okay, so you're saying that the, the what, the, the page on page three, you're, you're comfortable with absorbing, you can absorb it within your existing budget, but you also anticipate generating some additional revenues to cover this?
Yes.
Okay.
There are, there are two concessions that are, for the hotels- Right. That are, have been awarded.
Have already been awarded.
That have already been awarded, on the, on the north end.
Now, if we, did you say that you had, I didn't see Roden Bridge in here.
It's on the, the third page. It's just the, for planning.
Right after.
Okay. Planning is just the two compact pickup trucks for the-
So, so the same thing, on that, we need about ninety-three-hundred-dollar-
Yeah.
Adjustment, okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
Um, how do y'all wanna handle this? Do you wanna, do you wanna support everything or not support everything, or support maybe the parks, so they can absorb it, then Roden Bridge, and then come back to the general fund?
Yeah, you can split it up.
Okay, why don't we do this? Let me, let me hear a motion on, on approving or not approving the, the park system equipment list.
Motion for approval.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Tomayo, second by Commissioner Wood on the park system equipment list. Any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Let's go, bless you. Uh, let's go to the Roden Bridge. Do I hear a motion to, uh, accept or deny the, uh, the one pickup truck?
Two there, it's true.
Moved by Commissioner Wood. Do I have a second? By Commissioner Benavides, on the, on the Roden Bridge. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Let's go to the general fund. The general fund obviously is the big one. I would like to ask that the court defer action on this until you give us where we're going to be in our six-month review in May. Unless there's some sense of urgency that we have to do this today, uh, we don't know, I mean, I don't know where we're at in terms of, of our six-month review.
Right.
Uh, I know there's some information here about all these monies that we're getting in passport fees, and, so we're getting information about all these monies that we're getting, but we're not factoring in all the monies that we're not gonna be getting 'cause of the road, you know, 'cause of the, 'cause of the bridge system. So, unless, unless someone in the court just feels compelled that they wanna approve this general fund list, at this point, uh, I'll entertain a motion either way, but I'd like to have it tabled until we get the six-month review from you, hopefully, uh, by, by May, middle of May. Can you do that by the middle of May? Is that what we were talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Unless y'all have some other thoughts and you wanna do this, but, again, you're adding two-hundred-some-odd grand to the general fund, and we talked about it, you know, all this other stuff that we're gonna have to do, and I just don't wanna get blindsided and not have the money when we do that, so, um-
Some of these items, we've talked about though before, and some of them, obviously, if we've got bulletproof vests out there that are out of date, that shouldn't be used anymore, then we're putting some of our officers at risk. If we've got officers out there that need to be able to travel from one location to another, and they don't have the proper vehicles to do it, then they're not going to be able to provide the service that they should be providing. You know, an email server with software licenseings, I don't know whether we need $80,000 to do that or not, but some of these other things are day-to-day operations that I feel like we need to be looking at very closely, and, you know, taking not just, you know, my thoughts on it, because maybe I'm not completely aware of exactly what needs to be put in place, but, you know, safety issues, juvenile probation, camera system for the boot camp, that's certainly an issue that we've talked about, that we all felt like it needed to be done. Now, my suggestion would be not do the computer center and do the balance of everything else at this point in time, and then maybe, after we have a six-month look at the budget, maybe then we can do the computer.
Okay, do you want to do, you want to do an individual? You want, well, let's, why don't we do it individually? Let's do the computer center. Or do you want to do everything with the exception of the computer center?
That would be my suggestion.
Is that all right? Okay. Well, let me hear a motion then.
I saw move, everything except the computer center.
He wants to do everything except the computer center.
Clarify the motion. What was the motion again?
Approve everything except the computer center at this time, and then when we look at the six-month budget, if we have the monies coming in, we may look at the computer center at that time.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Wood to approve the equipment list as presented with the exception of the consumer, of the computer center. That knocks off $105,000? Okay, so that gets to about $120,000 then?
Around $100.
A little bit more.
Yeah, it's more.
Okay, all right.
We're almost at what?
It'll be about $145,000.
They'll have to absorb.
They will have to absorb.
And I think these are, I agree. I think these are things that we have to do, but again, you know, our budget's going to be very, very challenging, and just so we don't come back to, well, what happened? We all remember what we're doing here today, okay?
Some of the issues that I think we're going to have funding available for some of these things just comes from the memo we've gotten from Aurora de la Garza's office on what, as you mentioned, has been coming in on the passport issues and the monies that's coming in there, even though we agreed to allow additional funding for overtime and for some part-time employees, there's still going to be a large amount of money coming in, which is kind of a windfall for us, one-time deal, but we need to be taking advantage of that and providing what our personnel need to operate with.
At this point, we don't know what that amount is, and, you know.
There's, you know, there's some, and that's a good point. There's some estimates here, but we're taking all the smooth stuff, okay? We're taking all the money that we know we're getting, but we're not factoring in what the potential bridge system deficit's going to be. So you can take all this good stuff, we got all this money coming in, but we're going to take a, we don't know how big, we're going to take a hit on the bridge system, so we have to kind of balance that out.
Yeah, the end of January reports, it was a decrease from last year.
We've been knowing we're going to take a hit on the bridge system for a long time. It's been a long time coming. We've been talking about it for a long time, even when we were doing the budget this past year, we were talking about it. Because we know that it's going to be, take a hit, just like it did the first quarter.
Right.
That still doesn't mean that we don't need to be providing the proper equipment and the proper materials for our personnel, especially our.
I think we're past that. I think, I think there's going to be a consensus in the court to do that, but I don't want to rely strictly on these additional fees that are coming in, because there are small windfall, because we have a windfall on this side, we have a downfall on the other side, and somewhere, they're going to have to balance out, okay? So anyway, got a motion by Commissioner Wood. Let me get a second, and then we can discuss it.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Thamayo, discussion.
Yeah, I have some questions, because we certainly want to give, to provide our employees what they need. Tony, I was going to ask you, on your list, that's because of the additional offices, am I correct? That's what I figured.
Is anybody here from the computer center?
Just got zapped. Hello, Joe. So if you're going to have to work tomorrow, you know why.
You know, Joe, I sit, I co-chair the IT committee, and how is this going to affect us?
The exchange server is a very old server, and is being held together pretty much by Band-Aid. The departmental servers are going to be helping upgrade our web server, which is taking the beating right now with all the counties supporting different websites and the updates to it. The server we have is, you know, pushing its limits. It is a very old server. We're going to lose support on the exchange server and the departmental servers by next year. They'll be gone. I won't be able to bring any more hardware in to replace in case of a failure. The 48-port and 24-port switches are to replace a lot of switches that have already affected communications. Some of them affected the sheriff's department. We've been able to keep them going, and they affect also some of the departments in the judicial side as well as our building with all the renovations. The hard disk additions because on our current storage, we are running out of space, and I know we, the tax office wanted us to help give them some more space to store the applications as well as voter elections in a couple of the departments.
Well, you know, and I'm all for giving these other departments everything they want, but I know, Judge, that you've been strongly pushing for the two courts, that we're going to have to house and also.
But I've been what?
That you've been pushing for this, the two courts that we know we have to face having to fund them and house them.
Yeah, I haven't been pushing for the courts. I've just, I've been suggesting that we've got a $1 million, a $1 million picky that we're going to have to absorb. I'm not pushing for it.
Okay, well, the thing is, I mean, you've been telling us over and over and over that we're going to have to house them, and we're going to have to fund them sooner or later. And part of the computer system is going to have to be addressed, so, I mean, whether it's now or in May, we are going to have to make some major, major improvements to our technology system, so.
Definitely, and our, the last time the exchange server was upgraded was approximately seven years ago. That was before I came on board, and I've been here six years. We've already exceeded a lot of their limits, and it's been held together by a lot of Band-Aid at this time. But I do understand your concerns.
Yeah, but how long has the computer center been asking for these upgrades, though? I mean, it's been, got back to me when I was here.
Pretty much, I guess, just.
Court, it's never could fund them, and, I mean, I agree with, that we do need to do this, but I'm also suggesting that we don't know where these monies are going to come from. I mean, that's my only apprehension, but if it's something that you need today, if you want to amend Commissioner Wood's motion, include the computer center, because, you know, you can do that. I'm just suggesting we kind of walk, you know.
I understand completely, and if it would please the court, I would really like to have the exchange server, the switches, and the hard disk space at least for now, because we do need to support the other departments that are growing by leaps and bounds, and email has become a primary concern for the county, and I need to be able to keep those up and going. And those are my mission-critical piece of equipment. The rest, I can make do until we make a better decision in May, but I would like to have as a minimum on those pieces of equipment if I could.
And what ones are those, Joe?
The email server with software licenses, the Cisco 48-port switches, 24-port switches, and the hard disk additions. And I'll make do with the rest. I mean, I understand your type of money, but the demands I'm getting from departments are kind of difficult for me to support sometimes.
And we're still doing Band-Aid approach, is that correct?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
And we're still using the Band-Aid approach.
As much as I can, to keep it going.
The balance that you're eliminating is, what, $12,500?
Yes, sir.
Out of $292,000?
Yes, sir.
Might as well do it all.
Well, I mean.
That's what you guys want to do.
There's some.
Well, we have a motion on the floor in a second, so the only way you can do it is if you're going to amend your motion, or withdraw it, or change it or something, so whatever you all want to do.
Is the sky really falling, or can we, oh, can we wait?
I can try a bigger Band-Aid, ma'am, on the email server, but the switches and the hard disk space, we're running out of them. And I know if, you know, they go down too much more, we're going to have difficulty, you know, establishing communication.
You know, let me, let me ask the budget officer, because we really tailored this list down significantly. I mean, you're our budget guy, and tell us what your thoughts are. I mean, knowing what you know right now in terms of our inflows, can we logistically or mathematically agree to this and approve this and not have a real significant impact? I mean, I don't know. And that's why, that's why the only reason I wanted to wait, to see where we are, is we, I don't have, I don't know where we are money-wise. I mean, we haven't gotten a report from the bridge system, other than the last one that we got for the first quarter, and that already shows a spiraling down.
Correct.
And we've relied on this bridge system for years to help, you know, to help defray our tax rate. And, like you said, John, you're right. I mean, we know these things are coming, so we see the train coming, yet we're willing to, well, we got some extra money here, let's go ahead and spend it, but we see this train coming over here, and like I said before, the last venue should be the taxpayer, and all, and I know you agree, but, and I don't disagree, we have to do some of these things. We'll make sure that we, number A, we know what the financial impact's going to be, and that you're going to recommend, or that you're recommending, hey, we can do this, I think we can afford it, but I just don't see, unless the bridge system makes a turnaround, where else we're going to go. And it's not that I'm pushing for the courts, I mean, I'm not pushing anything, I'm just telling you, this is what we're going to need, based on the numbers that you provided, 1.2, 1.4 million, to fund these two courts on an annual basis. Now, albeit, this first budget's going to be 9/12, so it's, it won't be the 1.4, maybe, you know, a million or so, but still, the year after that's going to be 1.4, 1.5 million. So the same thing that happened last week, I'm just, I want to make sure we all remember, so we don't have, so I don't have selective memory come this next budget year saying, well, we didn't know we did this eight months ago or not, because all these things kind of just tend to add up and bite us at the time, so I just want to hear from you, what is it? I mean, we talked about trying to keep this increase down significantly. Commissioner Gatsa had mentioned about just doing a moratorium, not buying anything with the exception of truly safety-related issues like the vest for the sheriff. I mean, those things, if they're outdated, I don't know how old they are, I don't know how long they've been outdated, or, they've been outdated for five or six years, okay? And why the court never moved five or six years in this time, I don't know, but now, that's something that we've got to do. I mean, that's a must. But can we get around, you know, with the vehicles? I mean, can we, can we hold on one more, and I know it's tough, Sheriff, I know that. Lee, I mean, we rely on you guys to kind of, you know, bailing wire and stuff to keep the cars together, but come on.
Yeah, and if you notice, I asked Lee to be here for sure in reference, especially to the vehicles, because the list is significantly smaller than as requested, and if you notice, especially on the sheriff's office, the vehicles that are being recommended to be replaced at this point in time have in excess of 140,000 miles, and these are patrol units.
Seven.
And there are seven.
One of them is wrecked, I mean, it doesn't have any. We've got them down.
By the time these vehicles actually come in.
Are you going to replace, you need to replace the wrecked vehicle?
Yeah, because they're short.
Is that, you're going to replace it?
Yeah.
Okay, you need to do that.
And that's the mileage they have right now. By the time we actually go out for bids, and they're ordered, and they're delivered, you're talking another three or four months. So they'll have another 10, 15,000 miles on the vehicle.
Process to get them back in. You know, I agree with Commissioner Benavides in terms of the importance of our network system, and we've talked about this for, well, I've watched TV shows over the years with this. If this network, if we go down, I mean, it has an impact on almost every facet of county government, the way we operate, so that's something that we have to do. The only thing I've asked is, hey, we don't know where we are financially, can we defer, with the exception of maybe the vest? I mean, I think that has to be done. But on the other stuff is, you know, can we defer it two and a half months, so we get a May operation, see where we are? I mean.
I have a question. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
But the process of ordering the vehicle is what's going to take long.
Yeah, but once you order it, you're stuck with it pretty much, aren't you? Or can you send them back?
No.
Yeah, well, once you order it, so it's same.
You've got them.
The same thing, I think.
That's what I'd like to get, at least order the vehicle, get some of them that are really with a lot of miles on them. And the constables are, once, they had two vehicles to pick up last time, they were all dropped to one vehicle almost per constable, and we left two constables out of the list.
Well, do I have, do I have a consensus on, you know, John, let me get the vest somewhere?
I have another question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the, and I don't know, I'm just, I'm just wanting information. On the juvenile camera system, are we, is the other one out, or can it?
They have to have that.
Yeah, I know, but do they have one now?
It doesn't, I was there, it doesn't work properly. I mean, you can see shadows and, yeah, that one, that one you've got to do.
And the tax office has to be operating.
Yeah, well, that's, I knew I had the answer for, on that one, but I just wanted to hear it from Tony.
Table, please. If you're looking for justification to fund this, these items, I understand where you're coming from, but I'd like everybody to know that personally, I just made an agreement with the county clerk's office to take over the warrant department. You may be aware that we no longer have a warrant officer, and the person who's taking care of these warrants is driving a vehicle that has been turned in by another department because it was in really bad shape. I had to spend a good portion of my fund, repair fund, to repair that vehicle to get it up and working, and to give you a little update on where we're at with that program, we've had it working for a week. We've collected $600 in warrant fees that were not being collected before, and $10,000 in fees for the warrant, for the actual warrants, or for the, how can I put this?
Well, from my vantage point, it's not justifying it. I mean, I'm assuming that if it's on this list, it's some, you know, it's been justified. I mean, I'm not concerned about the justifications for it at this point, I'm just concerned about the affordability to do all this thing right now without knowing where we're going to be on our, on our, on our bridge transfer. That's my only, that's my only issue, but.
Well, all I'm saying is, this program looks like it's going to be bringing in a lot of money, and if you take this vehicle from me, I may not be able to continue.
Yeah, no, 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 I mean, we're not there yet. I'm just trying to figure out.
And that's what we want. We want some money coming in.
Well, it's coming in. Like I say, I've had it for a week, and we've already collected $10,000, or approximately $10,600. That, this was money that was already thrown out, nobody was going to collect this money. The county clerk's office gave it to us because they couldn't collect. So, you know, this is money that's going to be coming in, and I expect this program to work very positively once we get it up and running 100%, but I can't do it right now, and I can't do it if I don't have a vehicle to run it. You know, if I have to team up another officer, and I've got $6,000 worth of equipment for a vehicle that we could not pay last year, so it ended up sitting in the, in the factory or the store, because I didn't have a vehicle to put it on, because my vehicles kept breaking down, and now I'm stuck with a backup vehicle that was already turned in once. So, I mean, it's up to you, whatever you want to do, but I'm just, you know, concerned about where this new program that I just contracted is going to go if I don't have the vehicle to run it. And I'll let you make this decision on that.
Well, thank you, Constable. It's a tough decision, and there's no dispute that you all need these things. I mean, that's not, that's not the issue here, not the issue. So, Javier, you going to answer, or?
Yeah, the difficulty is, is we don't know all the revenues. We know for sure that the bridge revenues are decreasing, and in turn, so that's going to be a decrease in the transfer to the general fund from the bridge system, because I don't think their operations can absorb all of the offset, as far as cutting back on operational expenditures. The new courts, we know we're going to have to do. It's going to be very difficult. I think this is probably going to be one of the most difficult budgets that we've ever had coming up this next fiscal year. Not knowing the other revenues, exactly how they're coming in, I don't think at this point in time that there are significant increases in any other revenues, so whatever we do, it is going to place an additional burden. I do not see an offset as far as other revenues being able to absorb this. This equipment is necessary for the operation of these departments. Now, the question, I think, more so is, do we do it now, or do we wait until we have the mid-year review? The only problem is with the patrol cars is, because of the lag time, by the time we approve them, go out for bids, and we order them, we probably won't be receiving them until September of next year. It'll be this fiscal year, so it'll be September, the end of the fiscal year.
But either way, we're going to have to budget them.
Regardless.
Of ten to one.
Javier, can you tell me, have you been following, I know not too long ago, we hired, I think, three officers.
Warrant officers.
To go out and collect on.
For the JPs?
JPs.
But money has come in.
And, you know, I recall several times JP Gonzalez being before us, and some of the other JPs, saying they had hundreds of thousands of dollars just sitting there not being collected, and that's what we hired these three warrant officers for, and provided them vehicles for. How is that revenue coming in? Do we know?
It's coming in, and they're covering their operational expenditures. The great windfall of funds that are out there, I haven't seen it yet, but there's kind of a problem within that program, I think, is that not all the JPs are utilizing the warrant officers. Some of them are handling it a different way. It's similar with the county clerk's office, with the agreement, the constable Gomez was talking about. The county clerk's office had a warrant officer on staff, that position was eliminated, and they still have that vehicle. So there's a vehicle there that was, it's a patrol vehicle that was being utilized by their warrant officer, but it's in the county clerk's office now.
Well, best I remember, these warrant officers were kind of a consensus of what the JPs wanted to have done.
Among all the JPs.
And if they're not utilizing them, then maybe we don't need them. If they're only covering their expenses, that's not what we hired them for. We hired them to collect the old money.
Weren't they supposed to come back, like, in six months, and give us their...
Yeah, there was their number two, your report.
You mentioned exactly that.
Yeah, they've given us one report, but, you know, the JP's kept telling us that they had all these warrants that were not being served, I mean, that's why we moved in that direction, so I can't understand why some of the JP's would not be utilizing them.
Now, I, I'm going based on what's in the system, I don't know how current they are as far as turning in their reports.
When did that program start, do you remember?
Uh, it was like June or July of last year, I believe.
Has it been that long?
Yeah, but it was right at the tail end of last fiscal year.
We gave them, you know, I think, I think the, I think Commissioner Thamayo brought it up, we gave them, we gave them, we wanna see a report in six months, if it's making it, we're gonna continue it, but it wasn't designed to break even, it was designed to actually go out and not only pay for itself, but also generate additional, additional revenues for the county, wasn't assured of that.
Yeah, and I'd like to preface that by saying that the fee, the total fees that they're collecting, I'm just looking at, I guess, what comes, or what's showing up within their particular budget.
What would stay with?
There may be other fees that they're collecting that's going to different places, and that's why I'd have to get with the auditor's office and see the reports that they're turning in, as far as the total amount that they're collecting, compared to what stays with, with the county.
Well, my thought would be, if they're collecting the fees that are going different places, if those different places want them collected, if they're only covering their costs for us, then we don't need to be hiring them.
One of, one of the, I think, we talked a couple of weeks ago, I think the importance of it was, when you, when you start doing this six-month evaluation, make sure that you get with Rob, and, and that you factor in all revenues that are coming in, right? And that, and I'm assuming that's inclusive of these warrants, we need to know where we are, I mean...
I think we need a report, another report from them, I would request that.
What money is staying with the county?
Exactly. Well, we, we have, we have this before us, and, and Commissioner Benavides, as I inferred, is maybe suggesting taking another look at this, at our computer center, but again, if, if I do it eliminating twelve thousand, you know...
We might as well do all of it.
We might as well do it all, and, and my only concern is that, you know, we don't know where we're at, and, and I don't know what difference it's gonna make, once we do know where we're at, other than we know where we're at, that's all I can tell you.
Judge, and Commissioners, I, I appreciate your opportunity to hear us out, and I greatly thank you for that, if we need to cut back money, I'd be willing and glad to hold off on, on, I can split the switches in half, and only just house what we need to right now, and I'll wait till your decision in May, I mean, that's fine with me, if I cut those two items in half, that's roughly about eighty thousand dollars I can return back.
Well, I'm not looking, I'm not looking at the, at the total, per se, I'm looking at, at our annual amortization of this, because, you know, that's what I'm looking at.
But it will work with you however you want to, to make sure we, you know, we get everybody's needs met.
You wanna do the best first, and then, how do you wanna do this? I have a motion and a second to approve everything, with the exception of the computer center, so why don't we take care of that, and we can go back and discuss the computer center, okay? Why don't, so we get off center, you wanna do that? Okay, a motion by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Thamayo, to approve everything on the general fund equipment list, with the exception of the computer center. The, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Now, let's go back to the computer center, the computer center, what is it, do you wanna bring that back next week, and see what you can do in terms of bare bones, and see what it looks like, are you gonna, because you're talking about a hundred and five thousand dollar annual payment, which is almost half of what the general fund originally was, was looking at.
Okay, sir.
You wanna, y'all wanna do that, see if you can come back with another number, come back with another number, you know, to do that, maybe in a week or so.
Okay.
All right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so let me hear a motion to table the, the equipment request pertaining to the computer center, until, until they decide to bring it back.
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Thamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item thirty-one, consideration authorization to execute concession agreement number zero-seven-one-one-zero-four to Ice Primo LLC, is there a reason why this is not under consent?
I don't know, but we have some, some changes that Delby wants to make to the, to the concession.
Okay, do you wanna, do you wanna approve it subject to legal? You already made them, so it's ready?
That's why they weren't under consent, right?
The other thing, the other thing, Judge, if we can make it subject to increasing the, the rent from five hundred to seven hundred and fifty.
Well, but why, why didn't y'all negotiate that before you brought it?
Pete, Pete thought that we, that we could, I guess, get more money, get more rent, so we, we talked to the person interested, or the, the concessionaire, if we could...
He's already agreed to this?
Yes, he's already agreed to...
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the concession agreement with the change of increasing the, the monthly, the monthly rental, and...
That's from five hundred to seven fifty?
Yes, sir.
And legal's already looked at it?
Yes.
Okay. Move by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Thamayo, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item thirty-two, consideration approval of interlocal agreement between Cameron County and Valley Municipal Utility District Number Two regarding the West Rail project, is that ready to go, David?
Can you tell me what we're gonna be spending on that?
It says that, it gives the amount of the cost of the steel casing, do we have an estimate on that?
I think it's about thirty-two thousand, thirty-six thousand.
According to this, the county agrees to pay.
Well...
The installation.
Installation, that's what I'm asking about, steel casing is thirty-six thousand, and B mode paying for that.
Yes, we're gonna, we're gonna pay, the county's gonna pay, and we're gonna get reimbursed for the West Rail funding.
Well, how much, I think the question is, how much are we going to pay?
Uh, it's thirty-two thou...
Thirty-six thousand?
Thirty-six thousand.
Okay, so the way, the way, the way that it's worded, yeah, the way it's worded is that the cost of the steel casing is thirty-six thousand dollars, does that include installation?
Yes, includes everything.
The wording isn't right, the cost.
Says B mode will provide a steel casing, and B mode will pay for the steel casing, and that's thirty-six thousand, installation is also thirty-six thousand.
It's all inclusive.
I'm sorry, the total cost is thirty-six thousand, that includes installation and steel casing, I can change that wording for you.
How much is our share?
Thirty-six thousand.
Okay. All right.
Hard price.
You all right with that?
But the wording has to be changed.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, I just, it just wasn't very clear.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve the interlocal with the change that, that Delby or legal counsel's gonna make?
I saw move.
Move by Commissioner Wood, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries. Item thirty-three, consideration authorization to utilize the excess passport revenues to increase the extra help and overtime line items on the Cameron County District Clerk's Office budget, do I hear a motion to approve, but, again, these are, you don't need to explain anything unless you need to, but, but, uh, these are just one-shot overtime monies, okay, it's not gonna be an ongoing thing, it's until you, you get through, okay?
Right now, we have a passport there for Saturday.
Correct.
And I believe so far, they have about three hundred people registered.
Okay, all right, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Thamayo, second by Commissioner Wood, any further discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, item carries, item, last item, item thirty-four, discussion of possible action regarding the county, state, and federal legislative agenda, David?
Judge, Commissioners, I've only got one thing, just for, for the public to, to know, we had a meeting yesterday with the Board of Patrol, Chief Board of Patrol Agent, Mr. Vitello, and at that meeting were representatives from UTB, Dr. Garcia, PUB was there, and the Mayor Brownsville, as well as the representatives from our congressional delegation, Ana Garcia with Senator Cornyn, Julian Alvarez with Senator Hutchinson, and Denise Blanchard with Council of Chiefs, and basically, the meeting, you know, was just to discuss the ongoing levy wall concept, and how we can continue to try to incorporate what Hidalgo County has started, along with us, that we all know they're a little bit, ahead of us, given the, the bond issue that they had, and the money that they had available for levy improvements, and so, we're trying to get to a point where we're also in a position to try to be at, be, leverage some of this with DHS, and hopefully, when the funding starts coming down, we'll, we'll have a concept in place to do this levy wall project, so I just wanna make sure the public is aware that we're also working on that project, in coordination with DHS, local here and in Washington.